Okay, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, October 23rd, 2017. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Chiketti, here. Alderman Cummings, here. Alderman Cato, here. Alderman DiGiobin Carlo, here. Alderman Giacome, here. Alderman Guerrero, here. Alderman Hadley, here. Alderman Kula, here. Alderman Lopez, here. Alderman Martinez McCarthy, here. Alderman Napoli, here. Alderman Padula, here. Alderman Sherman, here. Alderman Purnaruski, here. Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you, we have a quorum. With that, the next item of business would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with the City Sheriff, Mr. Conway. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak. There is a five-minute limit and I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 62 Avalon Circle, Richard Wood. Richard Wood, Avalon Circle, Waterbury, Connecticut. First, I'd like to wish you all good luck in the coming election. Some of you look a little bit trim, having walked a couple hundred miles the past month, which is healthy for you. In the meantime, I want to bring you some good news for a change, normally I come with a basket full of complaints. However, people do answer to those complaints. On September 11th, we had an event at the Assembly of God Church over on Thomason Avenue. They hosted the entire city, basically all first responders, homeless, and so on, for meals, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And this was a church that was started by a group of men, under which Pastor Bruce Shelley was one of the founders. The current pastor, James Lilly, indicated to me that in answer to the needs of the community of homeless, that they were expanding their soup kitchen, and they were also enlarging their food pantry, because they've been donated a walk-in cooler, which is very, very important if you're trying to give food out to people and keep it controlled. On the other hand, there are some other things happening to show you how serious our drug problem is getting. A couple of us here went to a Narcan training a couple weeks ago. The next morning, I'm driving down Crook Street, a man collapses on Hawkins Street. Gave CPR, chest compressions, and by the time that was done with, the gentlemen from the fire department were there with the Narcan. I had some in my pocket, but they came in, we knocked it off right away. The gentleman survived. And I would suggest that all of you here take the training. Call Jennifer DeWitt over here at the Family Intervention, or over here on the fire department, and you'll set up a training schedule for you. Because the drug problem is becoming so widespread, that it can happen just anywhere. Like, I'm driving down Crook Street to come down here to do some business, and a guy drops flat in the street. He had no response whatsoever, none. And that's a sample of what's happening. I stopped down here over on Hillside Avenue this afternoon, I saw one of my clients, I said, "Hey, how are you?" I said, "You're still alive." She OD'd a month ago over on Hillside Avenue, behind one of the houses there where they coagulate. And the shame of it is, to show you how serious this problem is getting, her daughter died of an overdose. So here now you have the mother, still doing drugs, the daughter died, and this is a sample of what the police are faced with. They're doing a good job. You see in the paper last week, they arrested somebody with, what, I think, 5,700 bags of heroin? Just do the math, I mean, you know, this is not a game, and it's very serious, and it affects all levels of society. I come driving down Pine Street this morning, and I see two white Suburbans come tooling up. They stop at what you call a trap house, and they buy their drugs, and they go back to Woodbury, or Southbury, or Wilkins, or who knows? But this is a sample of how it's working, and what we're gonna have to do about it, I'm not sure yet. But I'm gonna come back in a month, hopefully with the beginning of a plan to start working with the homeless and the addicts when they come out of rehab. Because part of the problem is, they come out of rehab, they have no place to live. They're thrown back into the mix, they're walking down, the drug dealer says, "Hey, welcome home, here's a sample, free." And they're back on the juice again. And this is just a small example of what's happening. And the thing is, if we don't look ahead and start planning, we're gonna have a major implosion of this problem, because the addicts affect everyone. They could break into your car tonight, your car tomorrow, mine the next day, or whatever, or break into our homes, or whatever else they can get into. Because when they want drugs, they're gonna get the money to get them.
One minute, Mr. Wood.
Chinko, here. But this is the thing that we have to look at. But I'll come back in a month, and I'll throw something out on the table for you to give thought to. It'd be the nucleus of an approach that may have some feasible attitudes to it. Some of it may not be workable, but that'll be up for all of us as citizens to work together to make sure that the less fortunate of our citizenry is treated with the respect and hopefulness that they expect to have. And also, just in passing, Father Hoard over at Immaculate has expanded the community room over there with some support services also. So this is a result of, I think, of all of us worrying about this, and the people who can do something are doing something, but more is yet to be done. But it has to be teamwork, every single person here has to be part of the solution. Thank you very much, best of luck. Next speaker, from 14 Quentin Street, Steve Schrag. Good evening, my name is Steve Schrag, I live at 14 Quentin Street, and I'm active in the Gil Martin Community Club. I do not have a hard copy for everybody, I did provide one to Alderman Chiketti, I did email a copy of this report to all of you this afternoon, so you will be able to review it afterwards. A little bit of history about Waterbury. The lack of a union and tough federal regulations contributed to Scoville's Corporation having 11,000 reported accidents and 37,000 individual visits to the company hospital in 1915. Workers at the Waterbury Clock Company's exposure to hazardous materials led to the premature deaths to about 30 women who were painting radioactive radium on watch dials in the 1920s. A security guard in Waterbury was poisoned to death by carbon monoxide at PGP Industries due to an inadequate emergency response system in 1985 after the Hurricane Gloria. Twelve workers from Waterbury were crushed to death due to corporate negligence at Long Biance Plaza in Bridgeport in 1987. If we had had a corporate ethics ordinance on the books to properly vet contractors, maybe a construction worker would not have been crushed by a drilling machine at Carrington School in 2010. And also in 2010, a worker was crushed by heavy machinery at Summers Thin Strip, which is owned by a multinational corporation. Now, I raise all these things because this is our history, we should learn from our history, that we need to find better ways to protect people, both where they work and where they live. What I have emailed to you is a compilation of materials related to Synagro and the incinerator at the Waterbury Wastewater Treatment Plant. On June 9th, they were cited by the EPA for a variety of things that they failed to comply with. Now, one of the things to keep in mind is, it's not new that mercury is a poisonous material, that when it's airborne, it makes people sick, it does damage to their neurological system. It's not new to Synagro or anybody else that the EPA was working on a standard. They began that standard in the early 1990s. As late as 2011, they announced they would issue a standard. So their failure to comply with the standard in 2016 isn't because they didn't know there was a standard coming, they knew that it was coming. When we found out on August 20th, that there was in fact a consent decree between the City of Waterbury, Synagro, and the EPA, it came as quite a surprise to those of us that live in the South End. At no point did anyone in the city tell us that we were breathing in 26% more mercury in the air than the EPA allowed. And the city knew about this since December of 2015, when it began negotiations with the EPA to create that consent decree. It left many of us quite disturbed that the city knew that we were breathing more mercury than we should, and that nobody told us. So we've generated a lot of questions about Synagro, and the whole question about this particular incinerator. Some of those questions have been answered. We have sent questions to Lynn McHale Corporation Council, we spent almost two hours with two representatives from Synagro, but there's many, many unanswered questions. Not the least of which is, first of all, why we weren't notified that the mercury was going into the air? We submitted, Gil Martin Community Club submitted to the EPA as part of the consent decree, that there needs to be greater transparency about what Synagro is doing.
One minute, Mr. Schrag.
All right, then I'll cut to the chase. We need you as members of the Board of Aldermen to urge the EPA to come to Waterbury to answer our questions. We have contacted Tom Olivier in the Boston office, and he has refused to come to Waterbury to answer our questions about what's going on with the citation. We need you to pass a resolution tonight telling the EPA, this is not acceptable. They need to come to Waterbury and answer the questions of the people who live here. We have reached out to our federal representatives, they're gonna do a sign-on letter to the EPA. We've been talking to our state representatives. As representatives of the City of Waterbury, you need to tell the EPA, they need to come to Waterbury and answer our questions. They came here when we had problems with environmental waste removal, they came here when we had problems with brownfields in the East End, there's no excuse for them not to come here now. We need you to help us get them to come to Waterbury. So we're asking you tonight to pass a resolution calling on the EPA to come to Waterbury and answer our questions.
That's quickly, because you're...
Very quickly, the latest thing that obviously everyone has paid attention to is the spill in the Noggetuck River. And I guess I have a couple of preliminary questions about that. How is it that a company that's supposed to, under OSHA, have a lockout-tagout program, how is it somebody could cut into a live wire and cause a blackout at the plant? That doesn't make any sense. It's clear that they don't have a good OSHA program, it also is clear they don't have a good EPA program.
All right.
Where, just two points, okay? On your agenda tonight, you've got two environmental companies that you're looking at contracting with.
Mr. Schrag, it's five minutes, and if I let you go for 10 minutes, I have to let everyone else go for 10 minutes, so we're gonna end it. You've already had a little bit of extra time to finish your thought, but we're not going into a whole new series of thoughts, so thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, from 9 Cliff Street, Alan V. DeSena.
Thank you, Sheriff. My name is Alan DeSena, and I want to ask the sheriff if we could pass these to the Board of Aldermen before I get started. I want to thank you very much for letting me speak for five minutes. Tonight, I'm here with my wife Karen, and we're here to discuss some parking issues that we have up on Cliff Street. I have a nursing facility on Cliff Street, it's called Matituck Healthcare Facility Incorporated. I've been there for 39 years, and it has not been so long ago that we had parking on one side of the street only. Perhaps 15 or 20 years. I petitioned the city, I fought for that sign to go up, and they did go up, but the neighborhood took them down, tore them down, or whatever, and their signs are no longer there. We have a situation on Cliff Street right now, that if I had to call an ambulance at any time, or fire apparatus at any time, I don't think we can get these emergency vehicles into that facility. It's a total lawless street parking-wise. They park any which way they want, on the sidewalk, wrong way, this way, that way. I cannot be a police officer up on Cliff Street and try to police the area myself. So I'm looking for the Board of Aldermen to look into this, and perhaps go to the police board, go to the traffic engineer, let's get some signs up there, so we can have parking on one side only. That street was one side only. But now, if you could see the pictures I'm showing you, they were taken from my vehicle, I had to back down the street to let this car come down the street. Sometime if I'm coming down the street, a car has to back down the street to let me out. Now, let's forget about fire apparatus or ambulances, they can't get in there. I mean, today, there was some construction being done at the Willby Apartments, and they had to get all this big, some kind of a big apparatus, and they used a big flatbed, and it was a nightmare on Cliff Street. Because the big flatbed decided to park all day on Cliff Street with the cones, he had cones out there, which were in the middle of the street. It's almost unbelievable. I look out there and I cringe, and I look at my director of nurses and my staff, and I say, "God help us if we ever had a fire, God help us if we have an emergency with ambulance, have to come in here quick and remove someone out of here." So I would actually like to have you people look into it, and I intend to go to a police board meeting, see if we can get these signs back up there. But most importantly, they have to be enforced. If they're not enforced, signs are useless. Because I just can't be a police officer in Cliff Street. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker, from 45 Reeve Street, Sharon L. Simolia.
Good evening, let me just clarify, I'm Sharon L. Simoska. I live at 45 Pear Street in Waterbury. And I have two issues, so perhaps you will allow me a little bit more than the five minutes. I live very close to the sewage treatment plant. I am appalled, offended, angry, and terrified of what's going on there. The more I research, the more I find, there is a huge problem with who's responsible for what, who knows what to do, who's qualified to do what, and I open with that. And my second portion of this is that I, as a resident, have been told by EPA and DEEP that we, as residents in this area, should be notified of spills and hazards. I've lived here over 30 years, not once have we ever been notified of anything. And this time is very, very frightening. In regard to the mercury, I'm in total support that we've got to get EPA here to answer questions. We don't know where that mercury is falling, we don't know what it means for our health. If it's serious enough for the EPA to complete a consent decree, it's got to be hazardous to us, to our residents, and to residents of outlying towns around us. Mercury can stay in the air for a very long time. That means it's not just a threat to us. I want to know why residents aren't notified, I would love to know why the plant was allowed to be out of compliance. And this is the second time that I've seen this plant be out of compliance, and at the last minute have to do everything it can to avoid laws and regulations, so they can either take advantage of a grant or become in compliance. Several years ago, they were allowed to dump half-treated effluent into the river. Our whole area stank for months. Fish died, birds died, vegetation died, all because they didn't act in a timely manner. Now here we are with mercury, the same similar problem. You knew in 2011 that this was coming, and we heard at the meeting, one of the officials from Synagro blaming it on the city, stating that it's the city's fault that we're in this predicament, because the city didn't give us the funds to take action, or the right to take action. I can only tell you what we heard that night and what I read in the paper, but why is that? You're being allowed to not comply. Citizens pay taxes to the city for a reason, for positivity, for our safety, our health, and for you people to do your jobs, not just the Board of Aldermen, but the whole city. Are we doing that if we're allowing a plant to take shortcuts and put everybody's lives at risk? There's been a lot said about the problem with mercury, so I'm gonna cut that part short. The discharge that happened on October 9th is ridiculous. Was DEEP notified, EPA apparently, from my sources, was not. I was not. It was a week before we found out what was happening. There are inadequate signs. If you have a child, a pet, a family member who goes fishing down there, there's three tiny little signs that don't even tell you enough to get out of there. Saturday, I came through with the boat launch, I came through on Platts Mill Road. There were cars parked, there were people using the water. Would you want anyone walking in raw sewage? I work in the healthcare industry, I can only tell you what a GI disease from that kind of bacteria can do. I'm also concerned, the paper noted that an E. coli test was done, and behind that test, which showed unacceptable amounts, there was a phrase that, well, it's less upstream, it's less downstream, so we don't know what this means. Why do we not know what that means? Because we don't test on a regular basis. How can a plant, who is supposed to be compliant, be compliant if they don't measure?
One minute, Ms. Simoska.
Okay, well, that's, you know, I'll stop there for that. But the plant, to me, has been non-compliant for a very long period of time, and it's allowed to go that way. And we suffer. The plant takes 23% in from Waterbury, 77% of sewage in from outlying states and other parts of Connecticut. What does that do for our residents? We're put at risk while other people are okay? Is that fair? As a resident of this city in a depressed categorized area of town, I'm offended and I'm angry that we're treated that way. Am I allowed to do the second part, which is a different problem?
No, that's five minutes, thank you.
I'll be back next month.
Next speaker, from 30 Madison Street, Geraldo Reyes Jr.
Good evening, Board of Aldermen members. Geraldo Reyes, 30 Madison Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. And I wanted to start on a positive note, giving credit to Mayor O'Leary and his staff for getting ahead of the curve and hiring a person, a person, to deal with the issues of our migrants coming from Puerto Rico. So the issue is that the families are already starting to show up here, we already have over 60 children that have already been matriculated into our school programs, and if I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, it's 15 kids in high school, and the rest are in elementary and grade school. So, that having been said, what, it is very difficult to get out of Puerto Rico right now, there are not common flights to get you out, so what that means to me is that when all the airlines are back on normal schedule out of the three major airports, cities like Waterbury and the state of Connecticut will be inundated by even more students, which makes that position of liaison to the Education Department to deal with all the students coming from Puerto Rico critical. And I will say that the biggest issue that will be coming out of that, because the Education Department's already doing a good job of getting the kids into school, which is the most important thing, it will be the housing issue. So that'll be something that will have to be taken on, on a municipal level as well as a state level. So the housing issue's gonna be a big problem across this whole state. The next issue I have is already been touched on by a few of my colleagues here, and it's the Noggetuck River fiasco. So, 5 million gallons of raw sewage goes into the river, the ideal protocol you would think would be that the citizens would be notified sooner rather than later. And as a stakeholder, and a representative of the South End, and a member of the Environmental Committee in Hartford, I see it as my duty to speak out on behalf of the constituents that I serve and represent. And it's a deep concern to me, because I know the millions and millions of dollars that have been spent to clean the waterways. I was here in the 70s, and I do know what the Noggetuck River smelled like, and I know exactly what it looked like, and what color it was on what particular day of the week. So I do know what it used to be. So, it pains me that this sewage could go into this river, and in my estimation, is treated almost nonchalant. I'm waiting for, I haven't asked for reports from DEEP, from EPA, and I have had people, excuse me, in Hartford actually looking into this entire process, and to get a better explanation, because it's better to be informed and come with the data, rather than just shoot from the hip when it comes to something with DEEP and the EPA. But I will just say that this spillway is flowing right in the direction of where we're spending millions of dollars on the first leg of our riverwalk, and it's also been huddling down in that Platts Mill area. Anybody can drive down there and take a look. We've already seen the pictures of the dead fish and all the sewage that's on the rocks already, and it's not a pretty picture. And the Noggetuck feeds the Housatonic, which feeds the Long Island Sound, so I can see where this is going to magnify and actually compound a series of problems upstream and downstream. And the ideal here is that we have to have accountability and transparency for all.
Next speaker, from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I was gonna start off with something else, but everybody's here about the other issue I was gonna talk about. First of all, let me start off by saying, I believe it was June or May when this company came in, that we were getting ready to sign the contract with, to upgrade our facilities. At that meeting, I believe, in the public stands, there was maybe five people here. Everybody was briefed that night as to what the company was planning on doing, what the company was planning on upgrading, how much money we were spending on the plant, and they were also telling us, and our staff at the sewage treatment plant, as to their contact and what they were discussing with the EPA and the state. You know, it's real easy to come here and point the fingers, "I work in that area, I know how it smells right now, I'm not happy about it either." But, last time I checked, in a disaster, the first thing to do is contain it, notify the proper authorities, which was done. And from what I was told from a connection from the state, the biggest problem we have is we haven't had rain in the last three weeks. We're supposed to have a heavy set of rain tomorrow, and rain for the next two days. He said that should dissipate most of the odor. Now, this whole notion that the EPA isn't here, the EPA doesn't care, last time I checked, the EPA is here more frequently than anybody knows, trying to take care of these brownfields. And let me tell you something, if the state thought it was very high... And let me tell you something, if the state thought it was very high and they couldn't contain it, the EPA would be notified and they would be down there for sure. You know, it's real easy to point the fingers and, and say that the mayor wasn't on top of him, we weren't notified. Last time I checked, WATR that next morning had a newsreel that ran all day as to what happened up there, and it was in the paper. And what really upsets me this afternoon is to look online and, you know, you read things and you see things. And I have no problem with the press trying to do their job. But it seems like every time there's a situation that we're handling, there's one publisher in the city of Waterbury that always, always tries to amp up the public, try to spit out information before the facts come out. One story in particular was about almost a year ago. This individual happened to see something that happened on the green, an individual that was taken into custody by the police department. Instead of getting the facts, turned around, went on the radio, published it out there, then immediate investigation before they even knew what was going on. And, and made it sound like the police department singled out on that one guy on the green. It was despicable. And we had a lot of cops during that time getting killed out there because of rhetoric like that being printed. Because nowadays, people believe everything they read and see. So let's get the facts. I know the state was notified. I know the state is down there. I'm upset about the smell like everybody else. I'm hoping within the next couple of days it dissipates. And, you know, of course, the company's going to say that it was the city's fault because the company knows for sure that if they were liable, they're going to pay big money.
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
And lastly, I just want to say what came out of the paper this weekend about this so-called intimidation. You know, I'm a, I'm a commissioner on board. I've never been told how to vote, what to say, what to do. You know, this individual that claimed that, this is the same individual that tried, you know, the, the thing that happened up at Walsh about the lead was addressed and it was found after it was repaired that there was no more lead. That was being used as a campaign issue to this individual. So now they moved on to making up false stories and ludicrous stories. That's what they do. And, and to my knowledge, they're going to do anything it takes because they know that the numbers aren't there, and we'll see on the 7th. And I hope the rhetoric stops.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting of Monday, October 10th, 2017. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from Monday, October 10th.
Motion having been made by Alderman Giacchetti and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any, are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Before we go into committees, just a couple of things. I know we had a number of speakers tonight talking about Sinagro. I had had a conversation earlier today with the Corporation Council, and we are going to have Corp. Counsel and the relevant folks in at our next meeting to get a presentation about what's been going on down there between the Mercury and now the sewage leak. So we will get that onto the agenda probably as a presentation in the meeting, the next meeting, which I believe is November 20th, to see what's going on down there. Last week, there was an issue that came up, our last meeting, with respect to the car taxes having just gone out and what was going to be done with respect to the appeals. So the car tax appeals will be conducted at the same time as the real property appeals, which I believe is in, I want, I think it's in March, but just don't hold me to that. But it will be done in the spring, the same time that the real property tax appeals are done. I think average annually, we have about 100 people who appeal their automobile taxes. So hopefully that information will get out. And then finally, with respect to the item number three on our agenda this evening, which is currently slated to be received and placed on file, I know there are some questions related to that auditor's. That's the Adult Education Internal Auditors Report. So unless there's an objection, what I would do this evening is to refer that to the Finance Committee. I don't believe they'll do anything with it tonight, but we will have Mr. Bizzelli as the chairman of the FARC and whoever he thinks is necessary, most likely the auditor, attend the next meeting to answer questions with respect to that. Having said all of that, the next item of business would be to recess and go into our committees. There's not many items. We'll do both of them out here. We'll start this evening with intergovernmental.
We'll call tonight's intergovernmental meeting to order. First item on the agenda is from Mr. James Nardozzi, Waterbury Development Corporation interim CEO, requesting approval of a project authorization letter, PAL Waterbury, for the Nogatuck Industrial Park project. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Who is actually going to own this piece of property? It seems like there's a lot of players and people committing to financing, but it doesn't specifically articulate who will actually own this parcel.
The 10.5 acres that we're going to purchase will be owned jointly between Waterbury Development Corporation and the Borough of Nogatuck.
Could you state your name?
I'm sorry, I forgot. Excuse me, I'm sorry. James Nardozzi, interim CEO, Waterbury Development Corporation. Let me repeat, Alderman, I'm sorry. So the 10 and a half acres which we are seeking to buy will be jointly owned by WDC and the Borough of Nogatuck in a 50-50 split of ownership. All of the other land is already owned by the city of Waterbury.
Correct. What is, so this piece of property, eventually the goal is to turn over both parcels to a private owner who's going to develop them? Or are we going to maintain this 10 acres for ourselves forever?
No. What we would do is we would construct a roadway through this 10 acre so that we can reach our Waterbury-owned land. We would then re-subdivide what's left of the 10 and a half acres and sell it all off. We don't want to own it. We want to sell everything.
When you subdivide later on, are the parcels, the individual parcels themselves, going to be jointly owned between WDC and Nogatuck for purposes of who the tax revenue will be going to later on?
So this all obviously has to be worked out legally, but anything that falls on the Nogatuck side would be all taxed in Nogatuck. Anything that falls on the Waterbury side would be all taxed in Waterbury.
At this, I'm assuming you don't have plans at this point to see if any of the parcels would be joint, at which point you'd have to come up with some sort of agreement?
Correct.
Is, now, it says that Nogatuck Valley Development Corporation is funding half of this. Is there any payback provisions that we're going to have to do?
Yeah, so when we, when we, only if we sell the land, when we sell that 10 and a half acres, our portion, we would pay back Nogatuck Valley Development Corporation.
So if we're selling it back parcel by parcel, are we going to be able to pay the back parcel by parcel?
Yes.
And at all times, Nogatuck will be essentially responsible for the road maintenance. At no time will any of that be turned over to Waterbury. Are we going to have to provide them any sort of revenue to share in the expense?
Nope.
Okay. Let's see. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Alderman Lopez.
Thank you for recognizing me. I just want, Ms. Nardozzi, I just want to follow up on a question that Alderman Cummings just asked. So the property will be owned by Waterbury Development Corporation and the Borough of Nogatuck, not the Nogatuck Valley Developmental Corporation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number five from William Quinn, Health Director of City of Waterbury, requesting approval of the consulting agreement amendment to the current contract between the City of Waterbury, Department of Public Health, and Kenneth Ribano, doing business as KLR Environmental Consultants LLC. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve item five.
Second.
Alderman Cummings.
Thank you. Just want to get a sense of what the purpose of this amendment is because I'm seeing all of the amended language, but I didn't get the original language of what we were amending for.
Okay. I'm Stacy Theryan, the accountant at the Health Department. He is a consultant doing registered sanitaryian services. We put it into effect last year, and he's helping us with accreditation for the Public Health Accreditation Board.
So essentially, all this is, is expanding the scope of his consulting efforts?
It's extending it until June 30th of this year, well, 2018.
With a new role in, in the latter of what you said?
Yes.
Okay. So this language, it's, it says shall be revised. Is it shall be revised in addition to the current contract language or is it replacing since the current obligations have already been met?
Replacing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Cummings.
Yes, I, on the overview, it says the consulting agreement states that the consultant will provide environmental health services, including assistance with the application to the Public Health Accreditation Board, while other services other than assisting with accreditation.
Well, at the FDA, put together new laws that we have to follow, so he's putting new policies and procedures together for our environmental division.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number six from Neil O'Leary, Mayor of the City of Waterbury, appointment of the following individual to the Board to wit. Maritza Acosta, unaffiliated, Greater Waterbury Transit District, to fill the expired, unexpired term of Dr. Yvonne Smith Isaac. Term will start today and end on December 31st, 2018. Can I have a motion?
Motion not to disapprove, item six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is item number seven from Dennis Quavis, General Manager of Waterbury Waste Treatment, requesting approval of a maintenance service agreement for water and water pollution control customer management system between the City of Waterbury and Tyler Technologies, Inc. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have somebody representing the Water Department?
Yes. James Bertelson, Controller.
Okay, we have several questions for you. Alderman Giacchetti.
Mr. Bertelson, could you please explain what your job is for the City of Waterbury?
Controller of the Water Utility Administration.
What does the controller do?
We are in charge of sending out the bills and accounting for, you know, the revenues and expenses.
Okay. This mentions Tyler Technologies. Do we currently have a contract with Tyler Technologies?
Yes.
Are they the same company that we had a problem with through your department with misbilling several years ago?
Yes, Munis.
Pardon?
Yes, the Munis software.
Has that been corrected?
Yes.
Are all the taxpayers getting their correct bills at this point in time?
Yes.
For a while there, we were behind, like six months. Have we caught up on that?
We have caught up. Things are working well.
Now, this is a continuation of Tyler Technologies' software or is it new software again?
It's a continuation of the original contract that would, the original contract ran for a five-year term. This is, in the contract, there was a clause that said we had to come back with a new amended agreement after the five-year period, the agreeing or continuing the terms that were originally stated in the original contract.
Okay, this is going to cost the city $54,000 per year or per the life of the contract used of the software?
Basically, per year.
And how long are we extending it for?
Five years.
Five more years. Okay, the last time this happened, you and everyone on your staff received stipends because of the upgrade of the software. Is that going to happen again?
No.
So no one will be receiving extra stipends because we're extending the contract for five more years?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion to approve and I don't have a second yet.
A second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our business for the evening. Can I have a motion?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
We are adjourned. I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number one, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a refund request for SolarCity in the amount of $188 for a canceled electrical permit number PR20160000846 and building permit PR20160000826 for 205 Mackleville Street Avenue, I'm sorry, as submitted by E. Gil Granville.
So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number three. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve submittal of the audit education, I'm sorry, adult education report internal.
Please.
No.
Go ahead, I got you.
Okay. That's the item, if you recall, that I said, unless there was an objection, we would send it to the Finance Committee and bring in the chairman of the FARC and potentially the auditor at the next meeting. So if you would just hold it tonight, I think that would be the best approach.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves submittal of the adult education report, internal adults comments related to the review payroll.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold this item until Mr. Bizzelli or someone from the Finance and Audit Review Commission can attend one of our meetings.
Motion's been made to hold and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Standing Committee. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $4,148.
So moved? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is on consent to approve a refund request from SolarCity in the amount of $180, $180 for two canceled electrical permits for 205 McCallie Avenue. Item number three is to be held. Item number four is on consent to approve the project authorization letter with the Waterbury-Nogatuck Industrial Park Project with the Waterbury Development Corporation. Item number five is on consent to approve a consulting agreement amendment to the current contract between the City of Waterbury, Department of Public Health, and Kenneth Rubano, doing business as KLR Environmental Consultants LLC. Item number six is on consent not to disapprove the appointment of Maritza I Acusta to the Greater Waterbury Transit District to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Yvonne Smith Isaac with a term to run from October 23rd, 2017 to December 31st, 2018. Item number seven is on consent to approve a maintenance service agreement for water and water pollution control customer management system between the City of Waterbury and Tyler Technologies Incorporated. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve, the consent calendar is read.
Second.
Made by Alderman Chaketti and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve and a no vote to disapprove.
Yep. Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderman Chaketti.
Yes.
Alderman Cummings.
Yes.
Alderman Caddo. Okay, she is here, all right. Alderman DiGio Van Carlo. Alderman Giacomi.
Yes.
Alderman Guerra.
Yes.
Alderman Hadley.
Yes.
Alderman Kula.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Napoli.
Yes.
Alderman Padula.
Yes.
Alderman Sherman.
Yes.
Alderman Pernaruski. Alderman Caddo.
Yes.
Fifteen-approved consent calendar.
The motion carries, the consent calendar is approved. It's read. With respect to standing committees, the Chair would recognize Alderman Hadley, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $4,104.
So moved?
Second. Motion made by Alderman Lopez and seconded by Alderman DiGio Van Carlo. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the refunds are approved. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order? Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, Alderman Sherman.
Pardon me. Just a reminder, this Saturday, October 28th, at the Rivera Hughes Memorial Park, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, there will be a, they will be hosting a fundraiser towards Hurricane Maria, support Maria, excuse me. First mission is to try and raise enough funds to ship all perishable items that have been collected to Puerto Rico. Mission two is to collect up to 100 tarts sent to Puerto Rico for all the families that have substance damages from the hurricane. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Chaketti. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No. The motion carries. We'll see you all on November 20th. Good luck to everyone. Thank you.